Commissioner Look.
Here.
Commissioner Brassad.
Here.
Commissioner West.
Here.
Commissioner Schulte.
Here.
Commissioner Meisner.
Here.
Mr. Gamash.
Here.
Commissioner Reiner.
Here.
We're all present and accounted for, and as a note to the public, a reminder that public comments are welcome at every committee meeting. We have many of them throughout the week, and everybody is allowed to have public comment at those meetings. You can find a schedule of those committee meetings on our website at anokacounty.us. Next item on our agenda is tax claims and abatements. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
There's a motion before us. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner West. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
And that item passes. Next we'll consider accepting the regular claims paid over $500 in purchase card claims paid for the period ending November 18th of 2022. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
There's a motion by Commissioner Gamash, second by Commissioner Brassad. Is there further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
That item passes. Next we'll look for approval of the minutes from the November 22nd, 2022 county board meeting.
So moved.
I have a motion by Commissioner West to approve the minutes as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Meisner. Any further discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Those minutes are adopted as presented. I have no chair's remarks for you today, so we'll move on to committee reports, and we will start with the management committee report, and Commissioner West.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First item is a new position in finance and central services effective December 3rd today. It's one FTE accountant grade C012.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion by Commissioner Reiner. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gamash. Is there further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Look. Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
That item passes.
And, Mr. Chairman, next item, 1A in the additional agenda, is adopting Resolution 2022 M20. It's establishing equitable compensation relationships classification plan and compensation plan, and I'd like to offer that resolution.
The resolution has been offered and is before us. This resolution was brought before the management committee, and I think what we need to do, I think we need to take this later in the meeting as an additional agenda item. But it's more appropriate later in the meeting after some other resolutions have been adopted.
Oh, okay.
So if you'll remove your resolution from the table.
I will remove it.
The resolution has been removed, and.
That concludes my report.
That concludes the management report, and we will move on to the intergovernmental and community relations report. Commissioner Brassad.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, in front of us today, we have our 2023 Anoka County legislative platform. We have met on all these issues, and many of them are similar to what we've done in different years. They are frequent flyers on this platform. There has been inadvertently, under the leased vehicle sales tax item, the check was left off, and that is, we had discussed, that would be actively lobby for. But I would also like to make an amendment on this. During our workshop where we were all there discussing this, on the no changes to fiscal disparities without comprehensive tax reform, our discussion led to county supports it, but then in conversations with Karen Skepper and others, we've always had that one be in active lobbying. So I would like to amend that one to be into active lobbying because it sounds like we are going to have to actively lobby for that. So we've went through each one of these, and this is what we came forward with, with those two changes. The lease, lease sales tax going to lobby for, and then amend the fiscal disparities to also active lobby for. That would be my motion.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
A second.
A second by Commissioner Gamash. Again, that motion is to actually fix one part of it, which was a clerical error, and that's putting the X in the actively lobby for leased motor vehicle sales tax, and it moves the X from, on the fiscal disparities, it moves that from lobby with others to actively lobby.
Correct.
That's the motion, and the second on the floor.
Yes.
Is there further discussion, or does anyone want more clarification? It looks like we're all said and done. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Then that passes unanimously.
And that completes my IG agenda.
Thank you, Commissioner Brassad. We will now then move to, back to our original agenda, and go to item nine, where we will have a public hearing continuation, and I will turn the floor to our county attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, I will reconvene the public hearing that was first held at this board meeting on November 22nd, 2022. And the purpose of that public hearing was to get any public input and describe for the board the latest fee changes that are being proposed by county departments for 2023. My understanding is that some of the proposed fees were inadvertently left out of the previous notice, and now they have been posted. Is that true, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
That has been posted, okay. And was notice of this particular meeting then posted also?
Yes.
And it should be then made part of the record, okay? And at this point, I will call on Corey Kempf, the Finance and Services Division Manager, to address the board on those additional fees. Mr. Kempf, if you would.
All right. Thank you, Tony. Good morning, Mr. Chair Commissioners. My name is Corey Kempf. I'm the Chief Financial Officer for Anoka County. As you know, with the fees in your packet, you received a updated list. The list has three parts. The first part is fees that were presented at the November 26th board meeting, so there are no changes to those ones. There is another list in the Gulf area. These fees were presented, but there were some updates that Gulf wanted to do. It was more around the language and changes around what they call different programs that had been just inadvertently missed that they had found, so that got updated. And then the third one was around some additional fees that had been missed from parks, mainly around parks and around their bunker beach and the picnic and all those fees that they do. And again, keep in mind that these fees are set so we recover our costs. They are not set for us to make profit, and so these fees are looked upon each, you know, twice each year, so that the divisions and departments take a lot of time to ensure that we are properly being, that they are properly being funded and set up. So please let me know if you have any questions.
Okay, and for the record, those costs, those fees are reasonably related to the costs that we incur. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Does the board have any questions for Mr. Kempf? Any questions? Okay. At this time, I then would invite members of the public to come forward if they have any comment on these fees. I will ask a second time, any member of the public wish to come forward and address the board, and a third time, any member of the public wish to come forward. Seeing none at this point, I will then close the meeting, adjourn it, and then turn it back to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Attorney Palumbo. I would now bring before you to consider Resolution 2022-148 relating to fees for various county services, including fees related to permits and licenses and sales of materials to the public and other government agencies. Is there an offer of the resolution?
I'll offer the resolution.
Resolution's been offered by Commissioner Gamash. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, this requires a roll call vote.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye. That resolution is adopted. Next item on the agenda is to hold a public hearing, so I will turn the podium back to the county attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will now convene the public hearing, the purpose of which is to obtain comments with respect to the proposed capital improvement program for the county. Notice of this particular public hearing was published in the legal newspaper November 18th, 2022. Ask the clerk to make note of that for the record. And at this time, I would ask again Corey Kempf, Chief Financial Officer, to explain this to the board, if you would. Mr. Kempf.
All right. Thank you, Tony, again. Good morning, Mr. Chair, Board of Commissioners. My name is Corey Kempf. I'm the Chief Financial Officer for Anoka County. Every year, we do a public hearing around our capital program. Again, our capital program is a, is a plan. It is not, adopting the plan does not fund this plan at all, but it does put the plan in place that this is what we intend to do as we look at the five-year period. When the budget is adopted later today, that includes the 2023 portion of the 2023 to 27 plan, but it, again, so the funding would be put in place for the single year, but the plan itself is just being adopted as we have intention here. These are some of the things we're looking at. So just wanted to make sure that that is clear, and I think we have a quick, I'll do a quick overview of the capital program, and then we'll allow the public hearing to go. So again, a capital program includes projects over 100,000, equipment costing over 25,000, which also means all vehicle purchases. So that's what we look at in our capital program. If you look at our total capital program, we do spend approximately, over the five-year period, it is over $800 million. So there is a lot to it. Roads and bridges are huge. That's our largest one with 530 million in transportation costs expected. We have some large building costs as well. I mean, this does include the jail project out in the future years. In the current year, we have the 911 Center, which is sitting at that $27 million for mainly next year as you kind of look out. So there's a lot of dollars going in for that, and that has been approved and is moving forward currently with plans to be constructed in 2023 through 2024, as you know. And so these are just kind of the highlights. This includes everything from large maintenance projects of our buildings to keep our buildings in good condition, to IT projects, which are big system projects, such as the jail management system. We're looking at the finance system, as you know. So these are all some of the large projects that are with them. Also includes updating our libraries and also purchasing vehicles. So these are some of the major things that we will be doing. As you look at how we fund this, we use the county transportation tax. There is potential bond proceeds in a couple areas that we will be talking, mainly around the building projects, around the jail and emergency management center. We have a lot of federal dollars, and we have some state dollars. The federal dollars that are included on this do include some ARPA dollars that we are planning to use. We have over 20 million for the emergency communication center, and there are some other projects that also use ARPA dollars that this board has seen and approved through our ARPA budget plan. So, moving into our spending plan, just to, this kind of breaks it down. Road and bridge makes up almost half of it. The other represents the emergency communication building. That's why that is so big. And, you know, the rest are smaller overall percentages. You know, we do have some park projects. We get a lot of funding from Met Council and through some legacy dollars in the parks. That helps fund that initiative as well. So, as you look at the funding around this, again, state dollars are about 31%. Most of that is county state aid highway allocations. We get a number of federal dollars and for road and bridge as well. Our county transportation tax is about 7.5 million. The county funding of 20 million is a number of funds, and we're going to show that in just a second here. The 20 million for the county is split among different funding sources we have in place, from our IT fund to our building fund to our fleet allocation that was established. We have a fleet fund where we have an allocation for equipment replacement. We have a customer technology fund where we have put money aside over the years to pay for these larger projects. We have a building fund for corrections and dealing with our Lionel Lake campus. Security fund to deal with our cameras and our security of all our facilities, and the library building fund is a separate fund to help us maintain our libraries as some examples. So, again, there are many different facets of funding within this, but it allows us to move forward and keep our infrastructure in place and in a good place. With that, I'll turn it back to Attorney Palumbo for the public.
And one final matter. Have you received any comments from the public on this matter prior to this hearing?
We have not.
All right. At this point, does the board have any questions of Mr. Kempf? Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. Yeah, I just want a quick question. So I can't remember what slide it was, but basically it called out the other, and you had mentioned it's for our 911 call center. Why don't we name it that instead of other?
Commissioner Meisner, Mr. Chair, what we do here is the other represents just kind of miscellaneous projects, because we have basic, basically we have a building, we have road and bridge, we have kind of an IT, so we have high-level categories. And because it's a unique one, we've put it in the other because it's not really, falls into our current building structure, building plan, and it's not funded through that mechanism. It's funded by another way. So we just use other to use for these large one-time projects that come through that aren't fitting in those categories on a normal basis. It's more just a function of managing so they can also stand out when they need to.
Yeah, and that, I'm sorry, follow-up comment. So that makes sense in terms of it is unique. We're not going to be doing this traditionally every cycle. I guess I'm just, for transparency's sake, you know, if I'm the general public and looking at that report, it might be nice to have some sort of context to it. So that was just my only comment about that.
Yeah. Commissioner Meisner, this report is available online. People can drill into the detail and actually see what the project is. So it is available for them online right now and has been out there. You can actually look at it.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions by board members of Mr. Kempf? Okay, seeing none, I will then open it up for public comment on the capital improvement plan. Does any member of the public wish to come forward and address the board? I will ask a second time, any member of the public wish to come forward and address the board on the plan, and for a third time, any member of the public wishing to come forward. Okay, seeing none at this point, Mr. Chair, I will now adjourn the public hearing and turn the matter back to you.
Thank you, Attorney Palumbo. So before us now is to consider Resolution 2022-149, county board adoption of the 2023 to 2027 capital program, which includes the capital improvement plan. Is there an offer of the resolution?
Mr. Chair, I'd move to adopt Resolution 2022-149, the 2023 to 2027 capital program.
The resolution has been offered and is before you. Is there any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
That item passes. Next on your agenda is item 11, where we'll consider Resolution 2022-150, county board adoption of a final tax levy and final operating budget and capital improvements budget for 2023 program year for Anoka County. Is there an offer of the resolution?
I'll offer the resolution.
Resolution's been offered by Commissioner Gamash. This is, this is basically our flat tax levy, levying the same dollars this year that we have for the last, or for 2023 that we have for both 2022 and 2021. And this sets our budget out for 2023. Any further discussion? Commissioner Gamash.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to thank staff for all the hard work this year that they have done, and in the last couple years, as we have had this zero levy, kept keeping that levy flat through the last, through the COVID, through the pandemic, all of the things that have gone on in these last couple years, and we were able to do it once again. We had some dollars that we had moved into this, to take, to help us with getting it to zero that came out of asset preservation, and I thought that was a good way to do this. And I think my fellow board members for coming up with the idea because that was a good way to help spread things out and use some asset preservation for some employee issues, which we'll be discussing a little bit later on today. But I just want to thank everybody for their hard work. Had their noses to the grindstone and sharpened all the pencils in finance, and we got this done. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Gamash. Commissioner Meisner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I also agree. I really am thankful for all the work that went into this. This won't be too surprising probably, but I will not be supporting this particular budget, but I do not want this to be misunderstood. Again, that I don't appreciate the hard work of finance and all of our departments that got us to a 0% levy, nor do I want this to be mistaken, that I don't have a shared value of fiscal responsibility with my colleagues. The reason that I'm not able to support the 0% levy in 2023 is simply because I want us to do a better job to address our staff wage corrections. So 70% of our levy goes to salaries and healthcare every year. Four years ago, I voted to have our administrators' wage increased after only six months on the job, and I did this because I truly believe employees should get paid a competitive salary. So at that time, that salary was behind, and I thought I was setting the precedence that all employees should get paid accordingly. So with the Helios findings, I want to provide the same swift action as I did for our administrator. We are not doing the best that we can for our staff at a 0% levy. We could choose to do more faster by setting even a 3% levy increase, which is what I advocated for during every work session of this budget cycle. I do understand even small tax increases are a hardship on a lot of residents. District 7, my district, which is Fridley, Columbia Heights, and Hilltop, we have some of the lowest socioeconomic communities in the entire county. So when I say and suggest that I want to raise taxes for my neighbors, I really do, it weighs very heavily on me. So I am pleased that we are addressing our staff wage issue. This is long overdue. I'm really happy that we do have a good plan in place. I simply believe that we could do more faster to support our 2,000 employees. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Meisner. Commissioner Reiner.
Yeah, just a couple of comments. You know, we do have a flat levy. We didn't raise how much we had to take from residents to run the county, and it's not something we can do every year, but we have done it for the last three years. We may not be able to do it next year. But in doing so, to the concerns of compensation for employees, we do have an action later on in this meeting that will address that 100%. And we didn't cut anything. So, you know, a lot of times, you're cutting things to try to maybe not raise the levy. Well, we didn't do that. We fully funded all the things that needed to be funded, and it just came out that we didn't have to raise the levy. And so I'm pretty proud of that, and I'd also like to thank staff for all the good work that they did.
Thank you, Commissioner Reiner. I want to go on record saying I'm very proud of a flat levy, particularly in an inflationary period where housing values skyrocketed, people's assessed values skyrocketed. The state shifted the burden from business to residential, which hurt residents. Many cities, if not all, in Anoka County had pretty substantial tax increases to fund their budgets. It was hard to get a flat levy. It was not easy for any of us, and it wasn't easy for staff. We directed them to do a lot of hard work, but I think it was really important. It was really important in a time when people are frankly being flabbergasted when they open their property tax statements. All I can say is focus on the Anoka County line and know that it's 0%. We held your levy flat. We did that for a reason. We knew it was tough times. We knew that we had to work hard on our end to make sure that we could keep your portion of taxes down. Commissioner Reiner is right in that we are addressing employee wages at this meeting. In a subsequent action item under our additional agenda, there was a modification made at the management committee to your original agenda, so the new additional agenda in front of you has a new resolution that changes that, and we will address that when we get to that portion of the meeting. But again, I think we're doing, with this levy, with this budget, we're doing a lot of things we've talked about for a long time, but we're getting them done. We're not talking about them anymore. We're actually doing them. So for that, I thank my fellow board members, and I will echo the comments that have been made already about staff, Corey and his team, and finance, Rhonda's whole team, everybody she's worked with on this levy, on this budget, to get what we wanted done was yeoman's work. It was a big lift, but we got it done. So thank you. I will be supporting this resolution that has been offered. Any further discussion? Seeing none, this resolution has been offered and requires a roll call vote.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Nay.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
And that resolution is adopted. Next, we'll go to item 12, where consider a Resolution 2022-151, resolution adopting a public safety levy for program year 2023. This levy is the same as it has been for the last number of years, $1.75 million. It's the last year we'll be levying on this particular program, and it's again a flat levy from last year. Is there an offer of the resolution?
I'll offer the resolution.
Commissioner Brassad has offered Resolution 2022-151. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Meisner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just for transparency's sake, you mentioned that this is the last one of this cycle, but we are in discussions about what this looks like in the future. So I did just want to make comments about that.
Yeah, and to that point, Commissioner Meisner, it's state law would not allow us to levy for this next year unless we change state law.
Correct.
So that's what you're referring to, is we may attempt to change state law to continue the levy. But at this point, it does sunset at the end of 2023. This would be the last time we would do a public safety levy unless we change that. Any further discussion on the resolution that's been offered before you? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
And that item passes. Before we go on to item 13, I think we should do the additional board agenda at this juncture of the meeting, and I will turn to Commissioner West, who chairs the management committee, and the new resolution is in printed form in front of you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item 1A is recommended by the management committee, adopting Resolution 2022 M20, establishing equitable compensation relationships, classification plan, and compensation plan.
Before the resolution is offered, I will make the quick clarification as to what happened at the management committee meeting for those of you that weren't witness to it. The amended motion there was to adopt the resolution, changing that we fully fund the Helios study and the positions right away, immediately. we fully fund the Helios study and the positions, uh, right away, immediately, uh, with notification of employees by the end of January two thousand twenty three, with full implementation by March first of two thousand twenty three, for the entire implementation. Pardon me?
Non-union.
For, for non-union, non-bargaining employees. And that's, that's part of the, that's what the resolution says now. It's the only change that was made, is it's not paid for over time, it's paid for immediately. There was discussions with both finance and HR that that was preferable and doable. So that was the amendment, or the, the motion that came out of management, and that's the amendment that's, or the resolution that's before you now. So before we get into discussion, is there an offer of the resolution?
I'll offer the resolution.
Commissioner West has offered the resolution. It's now before us, and we'll move into a discussion phase. Commissioner Meisner?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Okay, so then I just want to make sure that I am understanding what, what you said, because you are saying one hundred percent of all wage corrections will be done immediately. We're not going to have the minimum, or below minimum, or below mid. We're doing it all, one hundred percent, every employee that needs an adjustment immediately.
I will turn to the administrator for clarification of your question.
Commissioner Meisner, um, fellow commissioners, just wanted to give you clarification on that. So essentially, it would be effective March first, two thousand twenty three, one hundred percent of the adjustments would be made for non-bargaining employees. So rather than the staggered, which was discussed at a workshop where it was March first, July first, and July first of two thousand twenty four, it would be one hundred percent March first, two thousand twenty three.
Commissioner Meisner?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. So then, follow up on that. Now, I am extremely pleased about this change. Um, as, as I've mentioned before, that we could do more faster. But now I want to know how, how are we doing this? Because in every work session up until this moment, when this change is being made, I've been told that, well, we, we can't do it, uh, without raising the levy and so forth. So I would, I would like, and, like, how are we able to do this?
Commissioner Meisner, I, I will say that I was the one who brought forth the idea of staggering it over time.
Mm-hmm.
Because we didn't know what the budget was going to be. We didn't know what, where we were going to land, what we had for overages, and so I was, I was preparing for the worst. We didn't even have a levy set at that point. So I was preparing for the worst. As we got deeper into budget talks, we got deeper through discussions, it became clear that we were going to have enough money, both in asset preservation and other places, that we had enough money that would trickle down through the budget, that we could fully fund this now and not carry it over for a year and a half.
Right.
Or two years. Again, it's, it's a combination of more information is available, and I've changed my mind thinking that this just makes more sense to do it all in one fell swoop, both for employee morale, for ease of implementa, implementation through the human resources department, and through finance. And, and the management committee unanimously agreed with that thought. Commissioner Brassad?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, at management, I brought this up because it just wasn't sitting well with me that, you know, our employees have waited three years for this study to be done, and now we're asking them, some of them, to wait up until two years from now, into two thousand twenty four. And we continue to lose really good employees. We continue to be a training ground. We have to get competitive. I've been saying this since my first day on the, this board, ten years ago. Um, to drag this out, you know, and first of all, I was pretty shocked, but when we started Helios, COVID started too. So there's a lot of reasons that it took us three years to get to this point. But now that we're here, I want to waste no time. I want to get this fully implemented. It did pass unanimously at management, so I thank my colleagues for supporting this idea, and I think it will help stop the bleeding. Once all non-union wages, everything is adjusted, then we can hopefully go back and the unions will come to the table, and, and then we can discuss those contracts as well.
The resolution is still before us, and if there's, there is more discussion, Commissioner Gamache, then Commissioner Meisner?
Okay. Um, thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I see, um, our human resources, our chief human resources officer is here today. So I do have a question, um, regarding, um, number three under the compensation under this resolution. And I just wanted to get some clarification because I, I don't know, I'm assuming that this will all be explained to staff as we indicated after beginning, uh, January thirty first. Uh, but it talks about, uh, previously existing career ladders, broadbands for non, um, bargaining unit employees, and it basically gets to the end will be eliminated. So I just wanted to walk that through and help me understand if, if there's any questions a, as to how that all would work, and I'm glad Steph's here.
Mr. Chair, commissioners, Commissioner Gamache, I'm Steph Bydoseyma. I'm the chief human resources officer for Anoka County. So as it relates to number three and the references to career ladders and broadbands, these have existed in pockets within the county, so they have not been available to all employees. But in the areas that they have existed, they outline criteria for professional development, certifications, achievements that when attained result in a compensation increase. And so with a new classification system and the compensation study complete, if we were to retain the career ladders and broadbands being in place and the programs that set those up, again, as a compensation tool, within the estimate from Helios and discussions with us is, inside of a year, it would undermine the integrity of this entire new system. And so the going thought at the county is to retain the content itself. We believe very much in what those broadbands and career ladders outline from a professional development standpoint, to prepare employees better for the current role that they are in and/or for future opportunities. But to have managers work with employees on goal setting and achieving and doing those things, but there isn't that compensation tie. Why? Because now we will have a brand new classification system, compensation structure, that really comes over top of that and makes it obsolete to have these as compensation tools. In the past, it's all that the county had, and it was only in pocket. So now this is a way to get consistency across the board for all non-union employees that fixes the entire thing. And so the compensation portion of these had to go away, which is why they're eliminated. They would be eliminated as of the effective date of the last increase being made to employees. So today, the adjustment has been made, proposed before you, for it to be March first. That would mean career ladders, broadbands are in place until March first and on March first. Then they no longer exist because the entire structure is in effect and wages have been adjusted.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Gamache. Commissioner Meisner?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Oh, don't go away. Okay, so I just want to make sure, okay, so we're eliminating it, but essentially what you're saying is that this new system replaces the need for it, right? Okay, so I just wanted to make sure that I heard that. And then just, uh, one other follow-up question, too. I'm really glad that Commissioner Brassad talked about union employees. Um, I've been in discussion a couple of times about that, uh, whether you're union or, or non-union, if it's a wage issue, we do need to fix that. Um, so the faster that we can do that with our union employees, the better. They, they, they do matter, and they are part of our workforce. So just again, uh, commentary about that, and, um, and then thank you for answering my question. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Meisner. Further discussion? Commissioner Look?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I just have a few questions. Uh, first has been, um, is this Helios study completed?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Look, uh, yes, Helios has completed the analysis. The only portion that remains in process is assigning points related to equity and the reporting that we do with the state of Minnesota every three years. So once this entire system now is com, complete, because it is, and the work has been done in the analysis, there's a point system that needs to be translated so that when we submit data to the state, we are able to do that. The next time we're required to do that is January of two thousand twenty five. So that is the last lingering piece, but is not related to what you're proving today. It's a translation for a state data system, essentially.
Okay. And, um, have we, has everyone had an opportunity to read this? The study? Everyone on this board here? Everyone had an opportunity to read it?
Commissioner Look, I, I think the documents that have been presented, we have read. I don't think any of us wanted to look at the whole study. Uh, perhaps you do, and I'm sure you can work with Steph to get a copy of the entire study.
So what I'm hearing is that the decision makers on this board have probably not read it. What I'm also probably assuming is that it's probably not available to the public to read, and it may not have been available to other departments to read, of which it impacts. Is that a true statement?
Steph, or Rhonda?
Uh, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Look, so just, just to, um, just to rewind us a bit, when we created the statement of work, and it was before you for approval to retain Helios to complete this work, uh, there was not a deliverable that included, uh, an annual report or a final report of sorts, reporting out a study. Study is an adjective used, um, in the industry to really go through the different components, pieces, and tools that we walk through in the four workshops with you, all the different, uh, data points, information, definitions, tools, all of the things that we did, and then what we reviewed with, uh, invited all of you, but some of you in the one-on-one sessions to review data on screen. Those are the products of this versus, uh, a report of some kind, like a annual report style almost. So just to clarify that, they have produced what the county retained them to do. We have shared everything, been very transparent, uh, with each of you in those workshops, nothing to, to certainly hide by. I just want to be clear, there isn't some, it's on a shelf and we can produce it, or we can email it. There isn't, it's not like an annual report style. The way these are done by these organizations is very much what we've walked through with you, and their presentation when Helios was here on site with you, for example.
Thank you.
Well, Mr. Chair, I, I do recall when Helios was on site here with us, and I do recall it was a thirty thousand foot view at best, uh, without too much digging down and, and, uh, and the promise that there's going to be more detail and everything else, and, and, um, and I guess, uh, I don't think any of us have read that detail, uh, to make this type of decision. Um, but what I do know is that we were sat down kind of individually, uh, and, and presented information. I'd asked specifically for percentages, um, of what, uh, what the increases were going to be. And, um, I don't know that any of, anyone else has seen these percentages. Um, but, um, but I, I, I guess I'm going to use the word shocked. Shocked would encapsulate my feeling at that point, where I saw percentages in the neighborhood of a hundred and seventy-five percent. I saw multiple percentages in fifty to sixty percent. I saw even more percentages than thirty to forty percent. And I kind of sat there and thought to myself, how are we coming up with these numbers? How are we coming, how can you say that a person who's making fifty thousand dollars and needs a hundred and seventy-five percent increase should now be making a hundred and thirty-seven five? And that for some reason, that person is engaged in their job and happy-go-lucky and, and is that far out of the market? I mean, I was just absolutely floored with the notion that, that these people, these Helios people, which I'm going to call into question their, their ability to come up with data, or what data they're using, or how they're translating the data, that they would come up with these type of recommendations. And I was told that there was mistakes. Uh, that was probably a mistake. Okay, um, I can buy that. I can buy that it's probably a mistake. Um, but I need to know what caused the mistake, and I need to know, were any other mistakes made? And, and when we're talking about, uh, millions and millions and millions of dollars, I think the last one was thirteen million dollar, I'm, I'm trying to draw from memory here, um, this has a serious, uh, serious impact on our taxpayers, serious impact on our businesses. Um, and we could say, well, we found budget savings, and so we're plugging it with budget savings. Well, generally, budget savings are used for the next year then, because we don't know what the next year holds, in terms of what challenges are we going to have the following year that we might need these dollars for. But let's spend it this year so we don't have it next year, so then we have a fundamental problem next year. I don't think that's a wise way of approaching it. Um, and so I, um, I think that, you know, I understand this is an action to, um, approve the plan, to put the plan in motion, and then we're gonna, as was explained to me, we're gonna go back and we're gonna really dig down deep, and we're gonna evaluate all this. Hold on a second. If the data says this, what are we evaluating? Why do we then now get to subjectively say, well, I don't think that's a hundred and seventy-five percent, that should be thirty percent? Or, or that's fifty percent, we should have forty percent? Or, I'm not buying it. I'm just not buying it. Um, and, and the simple fact that this information is not, um, kind of been made available, I think, is, is even more reason for, for there to be some, uh, people kind of thinking maybe something is suspect here, that we need to dig into this a lot deeper, a lot deeper than we have. And it's our fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers of Anoka County that we dig in and find out and make sure this is absolutely correct. So I will be opposing this, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Look. Further discussion? Commissioner Meisner?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, I, I will just speak to my, about myself, um, in regards to some of your commentary, Commissioner Look. So, uh, this is not my wheelhouse. I am not a human resource expert. I don't have an education in it. So we were privy to some presentations for myself. I took the initiative to learn more because I didn't quite understand it. It was a lot of data, and I agree with you. It was very thirty thousand feet above, so I wanted to understand what was happening. And these are our employees. I have a huge responsibility about that. Um, so I had a, an, a personal call with one of the Helios, um, um, representatives. Uh, that was over Zoom because they don't work here in the state. Um, I had a one-on-one with staff, several one-on-ones, to make sure that I was understanding what all these numbers meant. So I, I feel that I am, to the best of my ability, able to make a sound decision, because I went above and beyond and made sure that I was educated to a point that I felt comfortable enough. So again, I'm speaking for myself about that. And in terms of, you know, data and, and evidence, I mean, every single year that I have been a commissioner, every department has come up and said their, their challenges with retention and attracting talent. Um, and now we're seeing it, and it's been, you know, fire over here and fire over there. Th- this is, this is, that's the evidence. That's the evidence right there. Um, so, uh, even without the, the, the data of Helios and all the complex examination they did, it is obvious that Anoka County has had a huge problem in this regard. So, um, that, that's my comment about that in terms of, I, I don't know what other kind of evidence you really need, except that our staff are really struggling and have been for years. Uh, I think that in itself, again, is merit enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Reiner?
Um, okay, so, uh, to Commissioner Look's point, um, uh, there were some, uh, mistakes that were, um, obvious because of the large percentages. Um, so I have three things here. Have those mistakes been corrected? As there's going to now be a drill down between now and the implementation of this March first, um, can we then, if we find more mistakes, remedy that prior to the implementation? And then, uh, can we be reported on, um, those changes between now and then?
Steph?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Reiner, so just to speak to this, one clarification I'd like to make is, I don't know if I would categorize these as mistakes as much as the way this, this works usually is that they will apply their process and analysis to these things, and then we as an organization may value a role in a different manner, or there may be clarifications because of niche responsibilities for position descriptions, titles, comparables, maybe we call it X, and in the market, they call it Y. So sure, it could be a mistake, but the wrong sort of comparison use, those are the, uh, pieces now being fine-tuned. So just to clarify that piece so that we don't think, uh, what Helios has done is, you know, by and large, uh, mistake-driven, if you will. To answer the questions that you are asking, so, there is a segment of the employees that are slated to receive increases that may be a threshold we feel like warrant further investigation for the reasons I just articulated. We have set that threshold at, uh, thirty-five percent. So if their increase is slated to be thirty-five percent or higher, there's a segment of these employees that we are drilling down with Helios to make sure the right comparables were used, to look at the current position descriptions, again, which have now been updated and are being, uh, finalized as well, to make sure that there are answers for the why and that it is warranted. So that quality control piece is why in the resolution, you see the timing recommendation of communication to employees no later than January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. It is because if you approve this today, we want that time for the quality control with that segment group for the reasons, um, articulated. So that is one piece of it. And can there be, uh, a summary of that, or the answers for each of those in that thirty-five percent and higher group provided, made available? Absolutely. The current plan is that human resources is working with Helios on that. Then in conjunction with administration, the final, yes, this is validated, no, we need to do more, is what's being done between now and January thirty-first. That can absolutely be made available to commissioners.
Okay. You always give, uh, very long and complete, uh, answers, and so I like to summarize. Uh, so first, first question, um, have, uh, mistakes or whatever you want to call them, been corrected? Um, the answer is no, but you're working on them. Um, can more be made before implementation, March first? Yes, is the, um, answer I think I got. And then we can be reported on and will be reported on all those changes, and so that we're all comfortable with, you know, I guess what the- we're all comfortable with, you know, I guess what the final implementation data reads and the effect on employees. So.
Yes.
That's summarized, okay?
Excellent summary. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Reiner. Further discussion? But we do have a resolution before us, and it requires a roll-call vote.
Commissioner Brassad?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte?
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner?
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache?
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner?
Aye.
Commissioner Look?
Opposed.
And that item passes. Commissioner West, before you go on to item 1B, I think we're going to go back to the regular board agenda, and we'll finish the additional agenda later in our main agenda. So we left off, we finished item 12. We are now on item 13, where we'll consider resolution 2022-152, a resolution establishing compensation and expense amounts for Anoka County employees, unclassified employees, appointed division managers, department heads, elected officials, and county commissioners for 2023. Is there an offer of the resolution?
I'll offer the resolution.
The resolution has been offered and is now before you. Further discussion? Commissioner Gamache?
Yeah, moving, thank you, Mr. Chair. Moving down to the, I think it's the second be it further resolved, that the Anoka County Commissioner's annualized salary. It states in here, annualized salary for 2022. Is that supposed to be 2023?
Mine says 23.
Mine says 23.
I don't have the most updated one. I apologize.
Commissioner Meisner?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. So I am, I'm very glad that we just passed the most previous resolution about the wage corrections, because when I first received this one, while I didn't have a theoretical problem in terms of the salary, because I know that it's based on a formula, and that was the whole point of having everything examined, but I did have a problem with myself not being on the same schedule as our janitor or our snowplower. We fixed that, and so that makes me very happy. So I just, I did want to just make some commentary about that, because originally, I, that wasn't setting well with me, but we fixed that. Thank you.
Commissioner West?
I had the same problem when I first read it.
Right. Scheduling. Mm-hmm.
And if you'll notice, that's why we're moving items around from the additional agenda into our agenda and back and forth. So it's very clear and poignant, the process we're using. I will, for transparency and public edification, note that the county attorney's salary is set here, as well as the sheriff's salary, and the county commissioners. Those salaries for commissioners is $87,984 annually, and that brings us into the market. It does not bring us to the top of the market by any stretch of the imagination. It just gets us on, with the Healios study, it put us in a position where we're supposed to be as the fourth-largest county. And then the county attorney's salary will remain the same at $193,731.20, and the sheriff's annual salary will be $180,000, $3.20, $180,003. So those are the actual salaries that are called out within here, within this resolution. Is there further discussion on the resolution? Commissioner Look?
Mr. Chair, the Healios study, as I understand, suggested that the county commissioner's salary should go up to $87,984 from, was it $75,000 or something like that? I think it was roughly a 17% increase. And the justification is that, well, it's based on market. I would suggest there is no market for county commissioners. Just because other counties decide that they're going to pay their county commissioners whatever the amount is, has zero to do with what we take as a salary here on this county board. And so, I mean, this even, this even draws even more criticism on my part to this Healios study, on the fact that it's just, this is just a, it's a grab-bag type of scenario. And I can't support it. Not going to support the resolution.
Well, Commissioner Look, as we say every year, if you don't want to take the increase, it certainly, you can vote no and not take the increase. It's a simple process, so just be in touch with HR and they'll implement that for you. Commissioner Meisner?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a technical question, because I thought that our salaries were based on some sort of formula, though, in terms of statutory and what the county is like, maybe I'm making that up, though? I'm making that up?
Not true. It's set by us. We are limited at what we can make based on the governor's salary. We're nowhere near bumping into that cap, and some commissioners have had to rearrange their schedules, so they, if they get up towards that cap, they've got to actually get a state law that says they can go past the governor's salary.
Okay. No, thank you. And then just a quick follow-up comment. So I will just say that personally, emotionally, I feel the same way as Commissioner Look in regards to my own salary. What we were being paid originally was, I thought, quite a lot. So to see this number was a shock for me as well, so I certainly understand what he's, where he's coming from. But thank you for the answer about the formula. I absolutely thought that it was based on some kind of formula, so I'm glad I'm corrected of that.
Well, I will diminish no commissioner's here time they put in and the work they do, but I know for me, I worked very hard at this job. I put in a lot of hours, and I'm dedicated to it, and probably more than your average full-time job, and it's a lot of work to do it right. And this is compensation for that. Commissioner Look?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to ask the county attorney if there's a way we can break out the salaries so that, for example, I'm not opposed to the county attorney and sheriff salaries, but it's all clumped together here.
If I can, Mr. Chair, I just want to clarify, Commissioner Look, so do you want to move to amend this resolution at this point, to withdraw the salary action for county commissioners? Is that the nature of your motion?
Yes, I would, yes.
Okay. If that isn't in the motion, it would require a second to amend.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Look to take the commissioner's salary portion of this resolution out and create a new resolution for that. So there will be two resolutions. If Commissioner Look's motion gets a second and passes, and that means we'd have two resolutions, one with everything there except commissioner's salary, and the second resolution would be just commissioner's salaries.
That is correct.
Is there a second to the motion? Is there a second to the motion? Hearing none, the motion dies for lack of a second, and we're on the original resolution. Any further discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll-call vote.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte?
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner?
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache?
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner?
Aye.
Commissioner Look?
Opposed.
Commissioner Brassad?
Aye.
That item passes. We will now move back to the additional agenda and item 1B. Commissioner West?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The management committee recommends approving 2022 proposed revisions dated December 2nd, 2022, to the Anoka County Personnel Rules and Regulations.
Is there a motion to approve?
It's a move.
And a motion by Commissioner Reiner. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Brassad. The reason this has been shuffled around in the agenda the way it has is these rules and regulations encompass the stuff we just passed. And so if we didn't pass those, or if they had been modified in any way, this would have had to have been modified before it was approved. So now that, now that we've adopted those previous resolutions, this one is being handled. This one, it was brought up in management that this has been modified now three or four times this year, and it's a lengthy process. It's a big document, but Steph and her team in HR has worked diligently to update it, like she said, three or four times. Going forward, this will be an annual process. Once a year in December, we'll look at the rules and regs, and if they need changing, we'll amend them or change them, and otherwise we'll adopt them as is. But for now, the motion is before us. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Meisner?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, I'm sorry, I just want to make sure I'm understanding. So this is here because it's supporting the changes that we've just made?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That item passes. It brings us back to our regular agenda, item 14, which will be our last and final agenda item. Consider acknowledging that the county board has received a copy of the proposed City of Blaine Tax Increment Financing District for the following purposes. There are two items here, A and B. A is reviewing the proposal to establish tax increment financing, a redevelopment district, number 124, which is the Rainbow Village redevelopment project. And then lastly, submitting comments on the tax increment financing district to the city in lieu of the traditional 30-day comment period. This is by statute that they have to come through the county board with their TIF districts. We can comment on it. We don't really cast a vote here. We just acknowledge having received this, and if there are comments that you want submitted to them, we would take this time to do that. Commissioner Look?
Mr. Chair, I think as a city council member, some of us had that experience. We love TIF districts because you could capture all the increase in tax growth from a bean field, if you will, and utilize it in that development to try and, you know, provide incentive to developers. And it was a great idea, a great plan, but at the county level, unfortunately, the county receives no taxes on these things for perhaps 20 years, or whatever the timeframe is on a TIF district. So while we don't have a decision in the matter, it's always, it's always just one of those things that we have to deal with, so.
Yeah, and it's also true with school districts and others that are, that don't receive that tax increment during that time, and, but for the development, you're collecting taxes on the bean field. Now, the improved value, you don't get to collect that for anywhere from five to 20 years, depending on how long they set the TIF district. But it's good, Blaine's redeveloping. It's important that every city has the opportunity to do that. Coon Rapids did a number of TIF districts during its redevelopment phases, and I'm sure many of the cities we all represent will have these TIF districts over time. I think we just acknowledge that we received that unless anybody has further comments. Commissioner Gamache?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a question, and maybe I can direct it towards Commissioner West, since it's her district. The Rainbow Village redevelopment project, can you tell me where it is?
I'm not positive, but I think it is at Main Street and Highway 65 on the south side of Main.
That area that's...
It's named that because the Rainbow Grocery Store used to be the anchor there.
Oh. I'm going to turn to Administrator Severajah.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, I believe the rainbow is across from where Northtown Mall is. There was a Toys R Us, Chuck E. Cheese, Kmart, so that area.
Okay, okay. Good. I was just curious, because I know that Blaine's got a lot of redevelopment going on in different areas, and as a matter of fact, they're talking about an area off of 105th, or I believe. And so I think this is great. I'm glad they're able to do this. The TIF districts do provide a great opportunity for the cities. We did an Andover as well. And while you have to go through the whole process and you want to make sure that it gets, it's done correctly, and then as soon as possible, they can come off the TIF district, it does offer an opportunity to grow your city and help it economically. So I'm all in favor.
Seeing no further discussion, we will consider that acknowledged, and we'll send it back to Blaine with the few minor comments that we have. With that, that concludes our board meeting today. We are adjourned. Regional rail will start shortly.